Alright everyone, we're gonna get started now. My intention to keep the meeting pretty informal, open enough to a lot of questions if there are questions that come up over the course of the meeting. So we can get the ball rolling here. I'm happy to talk about anything townwide at some point, but at least in the beginning. I want to keep the issues narrowed to the two ordinances that are being proposed for adoption on Monday, the 26th by the council. And those are, for those of you that don't know, ordinances 1415 and 1416. And I just want to make it clear to everyone that these are simply proposed ordinances right now. Ordinances that have been introduced by the council, but not yet adopted. There are a number of individuals who I know have received notices, official township notices, as required within 200 feet of any zoning change that's being proposed throughout the township. Official notices are required to be sent to our property owners. And everyone within the 200 feet, as I understand it, has received them. I'm here tonight to indicate to you that this is here for discussion tonight. There has been no official decision made. This is the process that the township takes in order to move things forward. So I want to be explicitly clear though, before we get too far into this process or this conversation tonight, that what is being proposed by ordinance is simply a change to the zone and it is a conditionally permitted use that would come along with this zone. There is nothing that is-
Oh god, it's so low.
Can you hear it?
A little.
I don't think you do.
Oh, you better mute.
Alright, let's keep trying to mute people as they come in. Sorry about that. So again, this is, this is up for discussion.
Yeah, a little bit.
And we are going to try our best to, again, open this up to question and answers tonight and hopefully we can all have a, a conversation on this. So what is being proposed in the township this evening is, again, the two ordinances, I'm just gonna circle back once or twice probably in the beginning here for those that are continuing to join right now. And there are, to give a very brief background, there are six now permitted uses, or I should say permitted businesses that, or licenses that are being administered by the state to individuals who apply. And of those six, the township of Little Falls is intending to permit five of those six uses under the current proposed ordinances. Now, I say that because it's important to know which five of the six are presently being proposed. And I want everybody to keep in mind what it is that again is being discussed here. So I'm gonna go through the six licenses that the state is currently offering to individuals. One is a grower license. What that means is it allows someone to grow, cultivate, or produce cannabis in the state and sell and may transport cannabis to other cannabis growers, cannabis processors, cannabis wholesalers, or cannabis retailers, but not to consumers. And a cannabis grower may also be referred to as a cannabis cultivation facility. That is class one license. There's a class two license that is a processor license. The processor license will be, allow someone to process cannabis items in the state by purchasing or otherwise obtaining cannabis, manufacturing, preparing, and packaging cannabis items, and selling and optionally transporting these items to other cannabis processors, cannabis wholesalers, or cannabis retailers, but not to consumers. A cannabis processor may also be referred to as cannabis product manufacturing facility. There's a class three license that the township intends to authorize, which is a wholesaler license. It's someone who processes or otherwise obtains, stores, sells, or otherwise transfers, and may transport cannabis items for the purpose of resale to other, transfer to either to another cannabis wholesaler or a cannabis retailer, but again, not to consumers within the municipality. There's a cannabis distributor license, a class four license that allows transport of cannabis items in bulk. Interest date from one licensed cannabis establishment to another licensed cannabis establishment, and may engage in the temporary storage of cannabis items as necessary to counter out transportation activities, but again, not to consumers. There's a class five license. That is a retailer license. The class five license in the township of Little Falls at this time, under the two proposed ordinances, will be specifically prohibited throughout the entire municipality. There will be no retail location where any consumer can walk in and purchase cannabis within the township. I will circle back to that in a little while, and what it means for those that are prohibited or permitted now. There's also a class six license, a delivery license, that provides courier services for a cannabis retailer in order to make deliveries of cannabis items and related supplies to a consumer. So those are the six types of licenses that will exist statewide and have the option or possibility existing here in the township. Now, as I indicated, of the six licenses, the class five retail license will not be permitted under the present ordinances. Now I say that the way that I do for this particular reason. The state, the way that they have adopted their laws indicates that townships have the option to opt into all of these six licenses. And if a township opts into these licenses, what happens is, is for at least a period of five years, the township has no ability to opt out of those licenses that they originally opt into. In the alternative, if a municipality or city opts out of one of those six licenses, at any time over the next five years, they have the ability to opt in at any time that they deem fit or reasonable or necessary for their municipality. Now, I say that specifically about, again, the class five retail license here in the township. There have been a number of people who I think have been misappropriately labeling the town as a place where, oh, you indicate that you're stigma free, but then why not sell it here in the township if you're stigma free? And just to clear that concern up, stigma free, in my opinion, and as, as the stigma free towns have been intended to operate, has nothing to do with cannabis, has nothing to do with marijuana. It has strictly to do with mental health. And it encourages people to come forward who may have mental health issues. This is not a stigma, or stigma free, or stigmatized issue. This has nothing to do with stigma free. And I want to just again address that as one of the items this evening. Of the other five licenses, I want to also make very clear that while there are five licenses that may be permitted in two zones that I'll get into in a minute in the municipality, those five licenses, there has been no one that has come to myself or the municipality in any way that has indicated, I have one of these five licenses and would like to open in your township. There has been no one that has indicated, I have found this real estate and would like to operate in this particular location. There has been absolutely no direct or immediate interest in any parcel of land or from anyone that has any license that they currently maintain or own to, in order to do these things that within the state that has come to myself or another municipal official indicating that they want to open a business. So at this time, there is absolutely no actual interest in anybody opening up here in the township. Now, as I indicated a couple of minutes ago, these types, these five licenses are going to be conditionally permitted within the municipality. And I want to make clear what that means when something is conditionally permitted in a township. What that means is, they need to meet all of the conditions that are set forth within the ordinance to allow them to operate within the municipality in order for it to be legal within the zone where their type of license may be permitted. Now I say that because of those conditions, here are the conditional uses that they must meet. And I'm gonna try to move through these a little bit quickly because there are a whole number of them. They have to have minimum front setbacks. They need to be landscaped. There also needs to be no exterior display in any way of any signs of a weed plant, a cannabis plant, a leaf. Any of those types of things will be, none, I'm sorry, none of those types of things will be permitted whatsoever on any signage. There will also be a requirement that the portion of the lot in the rear of the building have a six foot high fence that is erected, that is no less than 50% clear and shall be placed on the property. All deliveries related to any of these types of businesses will need to be made through the rear entrance of the building, so there will be no trucks visible from the street for any of these things. For business establishments that are licensed by, by New Jersey for cannabis, there will have to be one parking space for every 100 square feet of interior building area. Now, many may not have a very clear picture of what that actually means. I will tell everyone here tonight that it is the most onerous parking requirement that the township has related to any use whatsoever. Retail locations have a less restrictive use. Restaurants have a less restrictive use. All of the other types of uses that we have here in the municipality allow for less parking than this does. And I say that because it's very important to note that anyone looking to open this type of establishment is almost guaranteed to have to appear before the planning board. And I say that because if somebody were to open a 20,000 square foot facility anywhere in the municipality, they would be required to have 200 parking spaces for that 200,000 square foot facility. And many may be thinking, that's a ridiculous requirement. And it is, intentionally so. So that anybody who is looking to open any of these other five licenses that would be permitted will be required to seek variance relief for this. We want them to have to appear before the planning board. So this is intentional. It is something that there was a lot of thought put into. It is not, it is not an error. It is not a typographical error. It is intended to be an onerous requirement. And for somebody to construct 200 parking spaces for a 20,000 square foot facility where there's likely to be maybe a dozen, you know, employees in the building at any time, they will most likely be seeking variance relief. There is also a requirement that business establishments install special electrostatic devices which are designed to eliminate fumes from the product leaking into the atmosphere outside the building. These are also commonly referred to as air scrubbers. That's another term that I've heard frequently used. And what these air scrubbers or electrostatic devices do is it purifies the air to ensure that absolutely no odor of cannabis whatsoever gets outside of the four walls of the building. So that is one of the other requirements that is required. And I know there have been questions about how can you guarantee that, or what happens if there is, even if they install the electrostatic device? The short answer to that is they are then in violation of the ordinance and their operation can and will be shut down if it is noticeable outside of the building. With today's technology, with the air scrubbers or with the electrostatic devices that are now being created, as I understand it in my research into all of this, there is absolutely no odor that moves outside of the four walls of these types of facilities. There is also, it will also be prohibited on any township property that, that marijuana use, will be prohibited on all township property. And we are also restricting the total number of licenses that can come into the township by prohibiting these types of locations from being within 500 feet of a similar establishment. So just based upon the proximity and really the amount of real estate that we're even allowing to be eligible under these two ordinances, there are very few licenses or very few individuals that could actually, you know, open up establishments within the township. So with that said, I am going to open it up to questions and answers in a couple of minutes after I first discuss the two zones that are under the current ordinances where these types of uses would be permitted based on the ordinance. There are two zones. One is the B2 zone. That is really the Route 46 highway corridor zone and the properties that abut Route 46. That's the easiest way to describe the B2 zone. The other is really a special commercial district. It's a special zone that will actually overlap with the current light industrial zone along Patterson Ave. The west side of Patterson Ave, as you, as you drive towards Route 46 from Main Street, it would be the west side of Patterson Ave is this new special commercial district where it would be permitted. So that is what we are opening up these potential licenses to, and the areas where they are potentially being opened up. I see that there are a couple of questions that are starting to come in on the chat, so I'm gonna start with those and then I'm going to ask individuals, start raising their hands and I'll start calling on individuals and unmuting them in order to, to get through a little bit of a Q and A. First is, why is Little Falls considering this ordinance without an actual vendor approaching with interest? Once passed, the intent will solicit interest. What is the positive with doing so? What is the infrastructure cost impact to the township? And what will be the ROI? When will it be realized? Sure. So this is no different than really, well, every type of use in, let me backtrack. The state is requiring every single municipality statewide to either, or to specifically indicate what is being permitted and prohibited in each and every zone within their entire town or city. So this is something that the township is required to do. And why are we doing this without there being any interest? We're doing that because we want to entice some interest in some of these licenses, five of the six, the five that I've gone through again with the exception of retail. That's because again, retail could be permitted in the future if the council believes it is warranted and ordinance has passed permitting it somewhere within the municipality. Again, an ordinance would specify an exact or specific zone where that may happen. What is the positive with doing so? What is the, well, the positive with doing so and the ROI that the township will see is the revenue. There is tremendous revenue that is going to be associated with these types of facilities within a municipality. And I say that because the state was very clear also in the laws that it passed that townships will be permitted to collect 1% or 2%, depending on the type of license that the individual is using within the municipality. And there are some very large numbers associated with the gross numbers of these types of businesses. So there is a positive and the positive is the amount of revenue that the township can produce. 1% or 2% of 5, 10, $20 million of gross numbers that these businesses may produce over the course of a year could result in 100, 200, you know, $400,000 a year that the township doesn't have now as a source of revenue and it will be a stream of revenue year after year. Not a one-time fee, not a one-time payment. This would become a consistent stream of revenue. Infrastructure impact, there is zero infrastructure impact to the municipality. There's no new roads that need to be created. There's no new sewer improvements that need to be made. In fact, these uses, most of them will likely actually utilize less than most of the current businesses that are in those, in those locations. There may be a little bit of water usage if there is a grower in, in a location. I don't know the exact quantities of that, but that would probably be the greatest potential impact to infrastructure within the municipality. But our water pressures throughout the municipality right now are, are very good, especially in the areas where these uses would be permitted. Someone indicated in the chat that I believe Little Falls should not even be entertaining this issue. There are certainly a number of individuals that have taken that position. And I, I've been very vocal on this issue. I voted in the election against the legalization of marijuana in the state of New Jersey. I think it's an absolute nightmare for our police department statewide. I think it poses a number of issues across the state. But the fact of the matter is, the state of New Jersey and Little Falls voted 2 to 1 in favor of legalizing marijuana. And with the result of legalizing marijuana comes these six licenses that the state is now offering. The question is, do we want some of these within the municipality or do we not? And with that, Little Falls has considered, and the council members have considered, the actual amount, or I should say, you know, what the impacts will be. And these types of facilities that we are talking about are all gonna be warehouse-like facilities. They will have a handful of employees each and they may have one or two trucks per day that will be entering, again, the rear of all of these buildings along the highway and along a roadway that is directly adjacent to a highway in town. So there is, you know, a, a lot to be considered with all of that. There's another comment in here that says, I thought we were getting tremendous revenue with the new apartments being built. And I'm not exactly sure who made that comment. It's a bunch of letters, but there is. There certainly is some revenue coming in. Unfortunately, the township has lost 139 homes to the FEMA flood buyouts and that set us back tremendously. We had a lot of losses due to MSU buying out a number of, of properties in town. We've also had a lot of lost property along the highway zone due to the Route 46 and 3 project that's happening. So there's been a lot of losses to the, the revenues that Little Falls has had, more so than most other municipalities. So although every town sees growing expenses and requires growing revenues year after year, we've had a number of setbacks and we need to ensure that we continue to come up with new ways for, you know, for revenues to be generated. Kimmel's indicated, I consider the fire department infrastructure. Sure, they are. I don't know what use the, or what, what negative impact there will be to the fire department as a result of, of these. There's also a comment from-
The, you know, cannabis tends to be, especially when you process it, it is a, it burns. I mean, I, I don't know what kind of facility you're concerned putting in. If you stack this stuff 20 feet in the air and it catches fire, it could be significant. Has, has that been considered? Have you talked to the fire chief?
Sure. So there are new fire suppression systems that are commonly, you know, included in these types of, of buildings and these types of developments. Fire suppression systems, you know, again, that, that would be up to par, would certainly be something that, you know, these types of uses would require. So there is certainly, you know, so, so again, I, I understand the concern. But it is, you know, there's, there's, there's ways to, I guess, ensure that the township remains safe. And the, again, a monkey ran-
To evacuate the wreck, the ball fields if the kids were playing there and, you know, you know, I don't know, thousands of tons of marijuana caught fire and the smoke is blowing across. Honestly, I mean, I have a lot of questions there. I mean, I'll let other folks go first if you'd like. I just don't think this has been really thought through very hard. I don't think the health and safety of the children playing at the Rexer in the area have really been considered, or the residents nearby. And I didn't hear that at the meeting the other night, quite honestly, for the planning board. I, I honestly, I asked a pointed question of your planner about what considerations were made for really the health and safety-
Mr. Kimmel, your, your, your questions-
And I, I didn't answer, so I'll ask you, but I mean, really she should have answered. I mean-
Okay, I'm, I'm attempting to answer here and the, the answer to your question is simply that last night's hearing was simply about whether or not the ordinance is conformed to the master plan. That was the only question before the planning board last evening.
And I did not, honestly, honestly, you, you didn't answer it. I, I don't, I don't think it was, I, I don't think it was adequately answered. I, I really don't. I don't think the-
Again-
With all due respect to them, that was a really poor way of addressing this. I, I really, I'm sorry. I, I mean, I respect you. I think you're a great mayor. I really do. I just, I don't know where you, you've just gone off on a tangent on this. I really do. For a couple of dollars, I, I just, I'm sorry. I don't see it. I, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. And I see your question. It says, if you voted against it, then why are you considering it then? The answer again is, is easy. It's legal now. It is legal. The state has legalized it. Again, I thought the, I, I voted against the legalization of it, but the answer is, it's legal. If this is now a permitted business within the state and there is, again, not necessarily a good reason to prohibit it within the municipality. And I say that to circle back to something that I said earlier, that we're here today to have a debate and discussion. There is nobody, including myself, that is absolutely 100% steadfast in permitting it, you know, in these zones necessarily. This evening is intended to have that discussion. So it, everybody, or at least Mr. Kimmel, you seem to be of the impression that this, this, the ordinance has already been passed. It has not. The ordinance hasn't been passed. We're here tonight to have the discussion as to whether or not it should be passed. And to appease the concerns of some, there have, there were some concerns raised about, you know, the process, the procedure of notification to, to residents. Again, anybody that is within 200 feet of any of these zones receives proper notice by the municipality. That's the requirement. That's what was done. There's now the discussion to be had as to whether or not it's legalized. I'm sorry, whether or not these ordinances are passed and these become part of the township bill. So that's what we are here for this evening. There, there's been no decision made whatsoever. But everybody here needs to realize also that of all of the taxes that you pay on a quarterly basis, the township only controls about 25% of that total number. To see an impact on your taxes, because the number one concern that I receive, when I go door to door knocking on everyone's homes year after year, is the taxes in Little Falls. It is the number one concern that I receive. So coming up with new ways to generate revenue is something that's always on the forefront of my mind. And this is one of those potential ways to generate revenue. You know, again, redevelopment, certainly one of those ways to do that, and we are working towards that. But this is also one of the ways that we can do that. So again, that, that, that is, you know, you know, what this, what this evening is about, having that discussion. I'm gonna go to a couple of the other individuals. Have their hands raised? So I see that Louis Fernandez has his hand raised.
Yeah, can I talk now, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Alright. I agree, the ordinance has not passed completely, but the first reading has been approved already 5 to 0 by you and the council. So it's halfway there. The final vote will be on the 26th. That's number one. You claim, with all the ordinances and regulations and, and conditions that you put for these establishments to be on Patterson Avenue, like for every parking space they need 100 square footage or something like that. And you give us the example of, it will have to be 200 cars to have a 20,000, whatever. That's ordinances and variances were made to be broken. You and I should know it because we had, we had quite a few examples here on Patterson Avenue where an individual came and he got 13 variances for a place that didn't have any. Number two, yes, I agree that the township needs revenues, needs money. Well, number one, we gave the, the general contractors that are building all these buildings and building all these apartments in town, a 50% reduction in rate in, in tax revenue, in taxes. In other words, in 30 years, they will be paying what any, any, anybody else in town is paying right now. In 30, it will take them 30 years to get to that level. So the only one that makes money is the contractor, naturally. I, you know, for a guy, for a gentleman, I forget the guy, for a gentleman that says, that voted no to this legalizing marijuana, you are pushing the daylights out of these ordinances. In fact, you are shoving it down our throat without even, and, and that was the question that I raised last night, without even proper notification. Most of the neighbors in my area, most of the residents, taxpayers of Little Falls, didn't know any, that this was going on. They had no idea, Mr. Mayor, no idea. I went door to door. I made flyers. I spent my own money to go down door to door and let them, let them be aware that this was happening right in front of our nose. Because the township, and I shouldn't be doing this, the same way that you came and, let me remind you, was during the pandemic and everybody who had, was wearing a mask to the intersection of Harrison and Harrison and Jefferson, I guess it is, or in Jackson, to, to tell us about it because of the issue with the trailers and all that. You should have came to the neighborhood and let them know that this was happening, this was gonna happen, and let them be aware of the consequences that might have happened. I don't know if you saw a blog. I'm sure you saw it this afternoon. A blog on the Gottlieb, I think it's called.
I didn't see it.
You saw it. The implications. They started, it was done by the, the local impacts of commercial cannabis. Reported, produced by the International City Council Management Association. What he lists from all the, all the objections to legalizing marijuana residential area from the order and that it may trigger allergies and asthma to explosion because of the chemicals that they use, the safety, the, the, the personal, the crime in the areas and all that. And this is the, we are so close, Patterson Avenue is so close to a residential area that we are afraid. And I will, I will, to be honest with you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight like a tiger to not, not to have this resolution passed. I'm not-
Mr. President, I don't, I don't wanna cut you off, but I wanna get to everybody this evening. What is-
No, I agree. Okay.
What, what is a question that I can help answer for you? What, what is a question that I can help answer for you?
The question is why, if it is, if you voted no and all that, I know you told us it was about money. Why are you giving all these people, all the, the contractors tax breaks and all?
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off right there, Mr. Fernandez. Tonight's not about contractors and pilots. The pilot, your, your, your statements you've made are completely inaccurate. So can I start with the pilot? I wanna talk about the ordinances that these individuals have joined this evening.
But we need money or don't we need money?
We do. We certainly need money. And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one statement, eight acres in Little Falls is gonna generate one and a quarter million dollars more than it did a year ago. Uh, so that said, I'm gonna leave that at that. This is not about the pilot. This, I, I wanna know, what is, you're indicating you're gonna fight this, this ordinance. That is what I'm here to talk about tonight. I wanna know what is your concern with these things being permitted conditionally uh, in these two zones?
The, the crime, the safety, the smell, and, and I don't care if you have.
Do you have any statistics on crime whatsoever in these types, with, with these types of uses?
No, but you haven't provided any either. And it should be up to you to provide all these statistics.
Yeah, I'd like to see that calculation.
There's no indication that there will be a crime increase because of these types of uses.
Is there any kind of calculation or is there any kind of study that's been done that determines that uh, like an economic analysis comparing the ratable increase to the reduction possibly in property values because now we've become?
No, it's never been permitted in the state before. It's impossible to calculate that, at least.
Okay, so, so it's never been permitted because why? Because it's a very.
Because it wasn't legal until November.
Right, and, and, and it's still, obviously, all these people, the folks here and there, it's, it's still a very, um, a touchy subject, uh, because it was just illegal a short time ago. I, I actually care less about you selling marijuana on forty-six than I do.
I agree.
You know, putting some processing plant next to the ball field. I just, it just doesn't.
Okay, and again, that's what this eve, that's what this evening's meeting is about, to hear these concerns. That, that is the whole purpose.
Okay, no, no, I, I agree, and I'm, I'm glad you're listening to us, and I, and I appreciate you having this. I wonder where the rest of the town council is. I mean.
Well, I will tell, I will tell you, I will answer that question. The rest of the township council, I was advised by myself, as well as the township attorney, to not be on this call. Reason being, this is not to constitute any sort of legal meeting. This is not a legal township meeting. This is not a noticed meeting. This is simply a town hall. This is a discussion. That's what this is. There's no decisions being made here tonight. There's no action being taken tonight. Of course, every one of these concerns is going to be brought to, and I will speak to all of the, the council members, you know, over the course of the next week. Uh, and to bring them all of these concerns. That is what the intention of tonight is. So they are, they were, they are not here for that reason.
Mr. Mayor, did you make any, any studies or any analysis as to why Patterson Avenue was chosen and not? Route twenty-three is a very well trafficked area. The, the, the amount of people that go through Route twenty-three is unbelievable. They, they should have more exposure. Uh, Route forty-six, Broward Town Road. Uh, there are other town, other, uh, streets in town that they, they receive the same amount of.
Yeah, I, I can answer that question for you because this is, so the, the Route forty-six corridor, of course, is there's obvious reasons why that was selected, um, directly adjacent to the, to the highway. And this is currently, this particular zone is currently a light industrially zoned area directly adjacent to, to Route forty-six with highway access immediate.
But so is twenty-three, I believe. So is Route twenty-three, I believe.
Route twenty-three is also, there is a.
There you go.
But, but there are also, the properties there are, are far smaller as a general rule, as you continue south on Route twenty-three. Um, look, again, these uses can still be permitted in additional areas in town. Again, they just cannot be prohibited. So it's not that, it's not to say that that can't be a possibility for the future. Uh, but right now, it's just not in these current ordinance. And I'm gonna move to Ms. Dylan, who has had her hand raised for some time.
Okay, I just have a quick question, Mayor. What kind of security will be in place besides six-foot fences? Because any kid from ten years old and up can hop over a six-foot fence with ease, and that's my only concern, truly. And who, what other security will be in place when the employees are not working?
Sure. So most of these locations are required to have security on site. Um, I, I, I believe twenty-four seven, actually. Um, or, or they at least have security consultants that assist in providing safety plans for them. Uh, again, but here's the thing, where it's, and many of the questions tonight are almost indicating that there's a location that's going in next week or next month. Um, there's not. At this time, there is absolutely not. And, and you know, I, I'm gonna also say this, and I'm gonna almost knock Little Falls on, on, on this statement, but I don't intend it to, to, to come off this way. I'm not positive that anybody is actually going to choose Little Falls as the location to open any of these five of the six licenses in particular. The retail may be in the future if that was permitted. I don't see why that would be a bad spot. But the reason that the other five, I highly doubt that someone will come to the township of Little Falls for, even though it may be permitted, is because you can get on Route eighty, drive ten minutes west and buy yourself sixty acres and pay about ten dollars a year in property taxes. You could put up a four hundred thousand square foot facility and pay about three hundred dollars a year in property taxes. Little Falls certainly has its perks, and you get a lot for what you pay for here. But why not go to Sussex County? Why not go to where land and property is far, uh, less valuable than here in Little Falls to open these facilities? Uh, and again, I, I don't mean to knock Little Falls because you, if you have kids in the schools, if you wanna have activities, if you want senior events, all types of different things, Little Falls is a tremendous spot to be. I don't know that these five of the six licenses, that Little Falls is the number one most desirable location um, for any of them, just because of what the cost associated with one of them may be here. Um, so, so, and to answer the question, so if it's cheaper everywhere else, why are we doing this here? Great question. Reason being, again, because if somebody does choose Little Falls as their home to operate one of these businesses, Little Falls could have a couple of tax points worth of annual revenue coming in, uh, in, in future years. And that's really the short answer why. Uh, you know, this, it, it would be, you know, a good location, at least as far as I'm concerned, but as far as their concerns, from a business perspective, um, again, that, that would be up to the business ultimately.
But by doing so, you and, you and the council are opening up Pandora Box. The possibilities are there that in the future.
Sure.
But, so.
Absolutely. And now, but if you, again, you have to look at the, you know, how long Patterson Ave is and how long our, our highway zone is, that's not one thousand feet from school zone. There's only so many possible locations because of the requirement that no similar location be open five hundred feet from, uh, uh, you know, from, from one of the other ones operating a similar business. Uh, so the possibility of there being forty locations in town is not going to happen because of the requirements that are in the ordinance. Are there any other questions that I can answer? Does anybody have a question, wanna raise their hand or unmute themselves and, and ask a question?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Magda.
Maggie, go ahead.
No.
Is she muted?
Yes, she muted. You're muted, Magda. Take yourself off mute or.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
I thought you were gonna talk, sorry. So that's why, um, I'm like, this is Magda. I'm on fourteen Ryle over here. Mr. Mayor, you were kind enough to speak to me last week. Um, I'm, I am still so unclear about this location. The way it's sounding like to me, it's across from the rec center. Now, I, I, I don't understand, like, you can't go by a school, but it's okay to be across from a rec center where our children play, and then there's a daycare. I understand the children from the daycare aren't gonna go there, but it's a daycare. And, and this is where I'm confused at, like, where, where across the rec center is this gonna be going? Like those two, two buildings that are right across? Is it gonna be going further down? Uh, this is what's confusing me.
Sure, so there is no location where it's going. And, and, and that's what I think a lot of the confusion is. Again, there is no one that has approached me and said, I would like to purchase this building and open up and, and utilize this type of license there. What this is simply doing is allowing it to operate in that zone in the future if somebody chose to. So I'll give you an example of this. Um, if we permitted, so currently on the, in the B-two zone currently, uh, there are, I'm trying to come up with an outrageous, uh, type of, um, I, I'll give you an example. In the light industrial zone right now, we do not permit uh, car dealerships in the, in the, I'm sorry, yeah, in the light industrial zone.
Which is you, you have to, because I, I, when I look at the zones, I, I can see, but visually, I'm trying to, I'm trying to place this. So is this behind where, like, the holistic pet care is? Or where, where, because this is what I'm trying to visualize, where I'm on Patterson Avenue, where my house is, where I'm, you know what I'm saying? So this is, uh, so like, behind holistic pet care, like that area, or, or?
This zone, uh, is the west side of Patterson Ave. So as you're heading, so I guess the best way to explain it visually is, is you're heading from Main Street down Patterson Ave towards the, the highway, the left side of it is the current light industrial zone.
Okay, so anywhere there.
Is established on the west side of Patterson Ave between the existing Transit Village Central Business District Zone and Route forty-six, which is previously designated LI on the zoning. So it's, again, it's an overlap of that area now. There is no specific location where any business intends to open right now. Again, that's not to say that they couldn't in the future, as long as they met all of the conditions based upon the current ordinance. That's simply to say that there is no one that has said, I wanna purchase this building, I'm gonna meet all of these conditions, and I'm gonna operate out of this address. There, there, we don't have that right now.
So, Miss, Mr. Mayor, you, you say all of these conditions. Specifically, what are all of these conditions? Because I have a great concern that there is little oversight from a regulatory perspective on any kind of marijuana warehousing, production, or anything like that. I'm not, I'm completely agnostic to the marijuana part. I, I don't really care what it is. I, I am concerned if it's, uh, a brewery or something similar because I am unclear what the additional regulatory oversight requirements are for that specific industry.
Well, of course, meeting all of the state guidelines, you know, and again, I, I don't have the list in front of me what they are for operating each of these in, in front of me now. But our current requirements and our, what, what, what allows them to be used conditionally in Little Falls are the six that I went through earlier. There, again, one of them is as simple as there being no exterior display of cannabis, marijuana, weed, pot, plant, any of those types of things on the outside of the building.
Yeah, don't care.
The fence, all of those.
I, I don't care about any of that. I can, I care about air emissions, water emissions, wastewater, DOT compliance, and odors.
Sure, yeah, and I went through the electrostatic, um, the installation of, again, what is commonly referred to as an air scrubber. Uh, it's an electro.
Air scrubbers, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, air scrubbers do not, uh, address odor issues or, I mean, they address air compliance emissions to a certain extent, but I can tell you right now, I'm smelling a, a site across the river that has an air scrubber, and I can smell the, uh, coffee that they're producing.
I agree with you, and I know exactly what you're talking about. I've been in your neighborhood as the smell is there. Um, but the difference is, this would be operating in Little Falls, and Little Falls and Health Department and our Building Department can shut down an operation if they don't address, um, you know, the smells that are being emitted from a building. And it would happen if there was this issue. Again, the way that I've researched it, that with these particular uses, um, with an electrostatic device that's installed, these odors would not be emitting from the building.
Electrostatic precipitators are completely different than scrubbers. So just, I, I understand what you're saying.
That's why they're commonly referred to as scrubbers, as people say, but it's the installation of a spec- special electrostatic device designed to eliminate fumes from the atmosphere.
But you still haven't answered the foundational question. What are the other regulatory oversight agencies other than local ordinances and perhaps, you know, DEP peripherally, that, that will assume oversight of marijuana facilities?
Those are all regulated by the state.
In, in what capacity? What does that mean?
I, I don't have that list in front of me.
Could you provide that to us at some point? Because that's, I feel that's foundational to what we're all concerned about.
Sure, I can certainly get that. Thank you. Are there any other questions that I can answer this evening?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, right now, we have, from what, um, from what I, I hear, we seem to have a lot of questions and basically no answers. And, um, you are making, well, the residents are, are very, uh, nervous and are very suspicious and are very, you know, they don't trust the, uh, the state or any, any, anybody else in, in that, when it comes to protecting their safety. And not only that, the biggest investment that I made, it was the house right here. The state will not guarantee, will not guarantee me or, or the other residents that the price of the homes in this area will not go down because of that, because of the cannabis area, cannabis area. So, uh.
I, I, I hear your concern. I would.
Or, or the safety of the, of, or, or the safety of this area. Nothing has been proved, like, like you said, up to now cannabis has been illegal, so there was no issues with it, well, supposedly, uh, legal issues, let's put it that way. Now, we may get, according to the report that you read and I read, um, erases, uh, crime, one of the issues that erases was crime. Are we gonna have crime in the area?
I, I, I don't know what article you're referring to. I haven't seen.
The blog, the blog that you read and I read.
I haven't read it.
Oh, oh, you, you didn't read? I thought you said you did. That's why. But anyway, um, um, tho- those are the concerns that most residents have.
Sure, I, I hear all of them. I understand all of them. I'm listening to all of them now. Again, I, 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 I hear you. And, and again, these are the discussions and conversations.
I don't think, I don't think anybody is, is again, a, a reduction in taxes because of, uh, uh, industries bringing revenue. Nobody's against a cutting, a reduction in taxes, a cutting taxes. But, but it's done, um, is it guaranteed the prices of the home, the safety of, of, of the residents, the safety of the kid, of the kids, all these things in, that have to be taken into account. It seems to me, and quite a few other people that I talk to, that's, that this was put at the eleventh hour on Christmas Day, you know, uh, all of a sudden, and, and it has to be approved right away, instead of giving it time and, and, and starting all the possibilities. What could happen if these things happen? What could happen if the other thing happened? Those are the issues that the residents are concerned.
Well, to answer that question, um, this needs to be done by August twenty-first. Or they are all permitted everywhere in town, in every single zone. So to say there's no urgency in getting this passed, um, would allow.
I didn't say there was no, no, no urgency. I said, I said.
You indicated that we're moving too quickly. We're, we're.
No, no, I said that it was put at the last minute.
Sure, well, it, it wasn't. I mean, this was not a secret from the day it was passed in November that it was legalized in the state. This has been discussed at numerous council meetings. You attend each and every one of them without fail every other week. Uh, and we have until August twenty-first to get this address. So there is certainly a sense of urgency to get this resolved. And that is this sense of urgency.
And what happens, let me ask you this, what happens if only one area gets approved, in this case, Route forty-six?
That, that can, that can happen, sure. Any one or any, all or none of them can be. But ordinances need to be addressed, uh, uh, or I should say passed, addressing all.
Okay.
All right, I see that Vanessa Pazza has her hand raised?
Hi, yes, I, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of another meeting, so I had to leave. And so I don't know if, um, if you read what I wrote in the chat, but I agree with Mr. Kimmel's concern. I saw that in the ordinance, there was a one thousand foot buffer uh, from these retail shops, or I'm sorry, from the, um, licenses to be near schools. And I think this solution to, to his concern, which is also my concern about it being, um, like, near or anywhere in, near the recreational facility, if you can extend that one, one thousand foot buffer to include recreational facilities and daycares, I think that'll just help people feel um, a bit safer about where their kids are and how, uh, how close the proximity of these uh, uh, licenses or establishments, uh, near to our kids. Um, in terms of the property homes, um, I, I definitely agree with, all right, that is a concern of mine as well. I'm that, um, I've seen other states, and I've seen some property, um, properties go up and some go down. So there's like a big uncertainty. Um, so, and I just, I, I wanna thank you, uh, the township or even. So, and I just, I, I want to thank you, the township or even passing, passing a zoning ordinance. I attended the council meeting a few months ago and I know that you guys said that you guys were working on it. So I'm really glad that you guys passed that and I think that's, that's all I have to say for now. I missed a lot of this because I'm, but anyway, thank you.
And that concern will definitely be brought to the council, I will definitely mention that. I see Adam has his hand raised?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm sensing that some of the disconnect here is that this is a, this is a pretty high level ordinance here that without, you know, we, we don't know what the company is, we don't know the precise location, we, you know. And that's a lot of the questions that we're hearing from the community and that people are concerned about. So I guess my question is about when those specifics are known? If, you know, if, if a company did decide they were interested in moving in and they made the purchase, what would happen next? Is there the opportunity, like, would they just move right in and set up shop? Or is there opportunity for the township to, you know, review their plans? Is there an opportunity to have sort of a community dialogue with the owners? When we actually know things about emissions and security and, and location and all of that?
Sure, they need to meet all of the, that's why it's conditionally permitted. They need to meet all of the conditions in order to open up a facility. So all of those conditions that are outlined in the ordinance have to first be met before it would be permitted. If it's not, again, variance relief would be needed and things such as that. All right, I see.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Ken Kimmel again. And, and, okay, in all honesty, you know, I don't think you expect to be mayor forever. So, you know, I understand you're trying to write this and you're saying, okay, if someone applies for the permit, you'll make sure A, B, and C is met, you'll make sure that they have the right fire protection system. The planning board, you, it's, the one thing about politicians is there's always a new one coming around. So how do we know ten years from now whoever is in office or whoever's on the planning board is going to know to do these things? So that's kind of my concern. I mean, I, I feel that it was written very generally. It's a concern of mine. I've seen these before from other towns. They are much, much more specific than what we have here. And I mean, I gotta be honest with you, going, going through planning boards for other towns, boy, they, I did not feel that the concerns raised from the public, I mean, you heard us, but there were very few responses the other day on the planning board and everyone voted. It was as if we weren't even there. I've testified before, I've seen, I've seen public testimony stop a planning board in its tracks. So I, I'm a little disappointed that, you know, I appreciate you putting the time in and hearing us all out, but it seems like it's just you.
Well, again, last night was just about master plan compliance and none of the questions that were posed had to do with the actual master plan. All of the questions that were asked are certainly questions that could and should be asked of the council and those are questions that would be answered at length by myself or the council at a council meeting or here tonight. But again, the questions last night had to do with state regulations. That has nothing to do with the planning board's purview of whether or not the ordinances as proposed comply with the master plan. And I mean, to answer that question as a blanket statewide, the short answer is, you know, any municipality that said, we are looking to ensure, you know, a good quality of life for our residents and looking to, you know, ensure that it's affordable to live within a municipality, it almost automatically triggers compliance with master plans because master plans couldn't have addressed or specifically prohibited these types of uses unless they were created within the past seven or eight months. Because prior to that time, marijuana was illegal in the state of New Jersey. So again, those questions last night were not about the master plan. They were a lot of good questions, but they were not about the master plan. And that's why, again, they weren't necessarily maybe addressed to your liking.
Well, I, I, I feel that I addressed my, my question towards the master plan and I just didn't get a response, quite honestly. So, you know, the master plan of the zoning board, I mean, they should take into consideration the health and safety of the public and the nearby, the neighboring properties. And the lady, your planning, the lady you hired, who was your professional planner, said she did consider the neighboring properties and the effect. And I said, okay, exactly what effects did you consider? And she's talked about the five hundred feet and the thousand feet distance, which isn't-
Well, the answer is-
That's, that's proximity, that's. So I, I honestly, I don't think you met my, you answered my question.
Again, not, not directly related to the, the master plan, it's like, again.
No, it was, but that, that, and if I have to get an attorney to present it, I will get an attorney to represent me, that was related to the master plan, I disagree with you. That is, that is the master plan for this town. What are you planning for this town? Where are you planning to put industrial facilities, you know, next to homes and next to recreation areas? That is part of the master plan. I'm sorry, that, that was my question in its essence and it was ignored. That is my concern.
You just, I think you answered your own question. You're talking about installing industrial facilities in what is an industrial zone. So, you know, again, I, yeah, that would comply with the master plan. It complies with the current zoning requirements. An industrial area in an industrial zone is exactly what is intended in that area. Again, you might disagree with what it's currently zoned for, but that is the current zoning of that area. I'm going to move to Mr. Bucalo.
Just from, from an environmental regulatory perspective, industrial facilities that are well-established, that have, have well-established EPA, DOT, you know, other environmental and regulatory oversight agencies, FDA included, are completely separate in my mind as a professional environmental engineer than cannabis facilities that have no other regulatory oversight. So you cannot compare the two, so please do not, thank you.
Mr. Bucalo?
Mayor D'Amiano, thank you for taking time to, to hear me out on this. As far as I know, our adjacent municipalities like Woodland Park, Clifton, Totowa are on track to prohibit retail of marijuana, am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, you know, I, I think your current proposal to delay an affirmative decision on retail marijuana is good. It gives the municipality Little Falls some time to observe best practices in other municipalities to evolve and make a decision down the road, if we need to make a decision down the road. So I, I support your decision on prohibiting retail marijuana. Only, I don't want Little Falls to be the first out of the chute to allow this and let other townships learn from us. I think we're in a position where we can learn from larger townships and take that information and make decisions in the future, which the law will allow five years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, as far as the Patterson Avenue issue is concerned, I think there is enough technology in place to scrub the air if there's a fire in one of these buildings, to suppress the oxygen, to stop the fire almost immediately. So very little would escape outside the building. But it, you know, recreation is a subject at all our schools. I think it's called physical education. And I think that thousand-foot prohibition that goes with schools should, should apply to the recreation facility, which is first class, attracts a lot of people, a lot of children on Patterson Avenue. I think that's a legitimate concern and I would urge the planning board to take another look at this or the town council to take another look at this. Because I think the, the people of Little Falls would very much like not to see just a whiff of marijuana around that recreational facility as they wouldn't want to see a whiff of marijuana within a thousand feet of a school. That's, that, that's my point of view and I have nothing more to say, thank you.
Sure, thank you. And I will be sure to, again, bring that to the, the council members. Are there any other questions that I can answer this evening?
I don't know if anyone can like visualize what a thousand foot is, but a thousand foot is like roughly two blocks. So I, I would just want to reiterate that I one hundred percent agree that we need to extend that one thousand foot buffer to recreational facilities and daycares. And I'm not sure what the other, the lady was talking about, about the, like, I, I share the same concerns about regulations. Obviously, these cannabis, you know, industries are not going to be regulated by the FDA, obviously, but they are going to be regulated by the, or at least by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So that's the only agency that I'm aware of that will do any type of regulation. I am personally concerned about, and I know, I, I don't think this could be added in the ordinance, I don't know. But I am concerned about these locations using pesticides, fungicides, herbicides on the, on the cannabis plants. There's a fungicide, myclobutanol, that is actually very, very toxic to the lungs. So I highly encourage that there needs to be testing. And I know that does not come from the, from the ordinance, that has to come from the state and that, I, from my understanding. So I just wanted to add that.
Absolutely, and that's exactly what I was talking about. There are other layers to this in terms of DOT compliance and EPA compliance and DEP compliance that, to, to my knowledge, have not been addressed through the cannabis ordinance people.
But I don't think that can be done by ordinance, like, that has to come from the state. I don't, I, I mean, from my understanding, that's, I, I don't think I've ever seen any ordinance in New Jersey or in Colorado or in California that adds that.
No, understood, but my concern is that there are no appropriate oversights from those types of agencies to allow this ordinance to be successful in a way that is beneficial to the taxpayers and the children of Little Falls.
Right, I, I agree, and I think that's just, that's an unfortunate risk that all these states that are passing these, these bills, that's the risk that we're all taking.
All right, are there any other questions before we wrap up this evening?
Yeah, I just, I just don't see how we are, we're going to leave the state, the DOT, the Health Department of, the State Health Department or any other outside agency regulate something that is happening in Little Falls. Nobody's going to take care of Little Falls better than its own residents.
Mr. Fernandez, but to that point then, that, that would mean that there would be absolutely no reason for any state agencies or state, would, would the-
I didn't say that, I didn't say, I didn't say that, Mr. Mayor.
Everything else is regulated by-
I didn't say that, but nobody's going to take care of your house better than you.
Sure.
Mr. Fernandez, just from a regulatory compliance perspective, the, the federal government regulates things in, in a larger sense. The state cannot be any less stringent than the feds and the local township cannot be any less stringent than all of those things. So that's sort of the structure that we're talking about.
All right, any other questions before we wrap up this evening?
Yeah, if I may say something, I hope, I hope everybody that attended today's meeting, please, please show up the twenty-sixth, next Monday at seven PM at the, at City Hall and wear a mask. If we want to do something about this ordinance, it's our, it's our chance to speak up. Thank you.
Ms. Trapanese, I saw you.
Hi, hi, everybody, I hopped on late, I'm Debbie Trapanese, I am resident of this town. I'm mother, wife, I have four children, my kids go to school and I also work in the cannabis industry. And, and I know there is a lot of hesitance, there's a lot of issues and everything that people have, but, and I'm not going to go here and just kind of like, you know, rebuttal or whatever, but I just want to let you guys know that a cultivation facility, I know it might not be the ideal location for everybody, but they are regulated by the Department of Health. You have people like families, I mean, like people who have families like us who work there that are trying to make a living. In order to work there, you need to be fingerprinted, you need to be badge, there is high security. These are people who have college degrees in horticulture, business professionals that do work in these cultivation facilities, because I know there's a stigma and, but I just want to let you guys know, it's, it's not as bad as it seems. If you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to me. I will talk to you guys one-on-one, if anything, because I know this meeting's wrapping up.
Well, thank you, everyone, for joining. I'm going to take everybody's concerns this evening that we've heard to the council. They've always been more than willing to hear out all of the concerns that everybody in the township has. You know, I, I mean, I or the council, we, we have no individual dog in this fight. We simply want what's best for the town. So, you know, to, to say that there's been a decision made, to say that there's, you know, that just because something is introduced means it's, it's already adopted, that is not accurate. Oh, and I see that Mr. Armando has raised his hand. I'm going to, we'll hear from him before we close it out tonight.
How you doing, Mayor? Yeah, my name is Gary Armando and I'm an owner, a business owner on Patterson Avenue. I don't live in Little Falls. I've owned my business and served the community for, you know, the last twenty years. And I'm, I'm just really surprised that they would be doing something like this, you know. Like I said, I don't live there and I would not want my kids that beautiful recreation center that they built down the street. I, I just think it's crazy. You know, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to get into all the legal stuff and zoning, but I just think it's, I, I don't see how it's a good thing for the community. And all I've heard, the, the only reason it's being considered is for money. And, you know, I just have a high regard for our kids and, you know, there's a huge drug problem in our communities and our country that's, that's killing our youth. And to even consider allowing something like that down the street is, is just, I, I don't get it, you know. So that's all I really have to say. I don't know, Mayor, if you have any comments, you know, I'm-
Sure, yeah, you know, I, I guess the, the perspective that I have on it is this. And look, there's nobody that's more proud of that recreation facility than I am. I have two kids, one six, one three and a half, who are going to, I'm going to be spending about every weekend for the rest of my life at that recreation facility, you know, at least for the next, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, whatever that kid is. So there's going to be no one there more than me and there's no one that's more proud of it than me. I, I, I can appreciate where you're coming from. But the licenses that we're talking about permitting, as you kind of heard, Ms. Trapanese just engaged, they're going to be essentially warehouses that have a dozen employees show up. They're all educated individuals to have a truck that may be coming in, you know, one or two trucks a day coming in and out of the back. And again, this is if the council adopts this ordinance or not, you know, there's, again, the reason for this, this meeting tonight is because there hasn't been a decision. I wanted the perspective of everybody. We want to see, you know, what the township perspective is. What I also find interesting is that there were, you know, over fifty people on this meeting at, at some point and I heard four people speak, you know, against it. That means that there's forty-six people that are on this meeting or, or more that, that, you know, didn't have necessarily a, a position on it, maybe indifferent, maybe didn't want to speak out, you know, in favor of it. Again, there's, you know, I will tell you, there's clearly a desire in the state that marijuana be legal. To say it's right across from the recreation facility, the way it's proposed, you, you're absolutely right. Again, reason being, it's going to be a blank warehouse in the front with one or two trucks a day coming and going, you know, taking out a pallet of something, if that, if they're ultimately permitted there. So, so again, I, I don't necessarily see a downside. You know, people have said, if your house was there, would you want it there? It's somewhat, in my opinion, an innocuous use of, of, of a building. Retail, on the other hand, I think is very different. I think that the retail demand will be very different from what these other five licenses will require. You know, and again, it's, I, I, I hear everybody's concerns, I certainly do. You know, and again, it's, I, I, I hear everybody's concerns. I certainly do. The rec center, I'm certainly proud of it. I, I'm going to bring all of the concerns that everybody has raised tonight, like you said, to the council members and I'm sure I'll have some discussions with each and every one of them. And ultimately, you know, a decision will be made whether or not the ordinance is, is adopted or whether or not it's amended or whether or not it's permitted in one, both or none of the zones where it's originally introduced. So I can appreciate where you're coming from. But again, you know, being again, involved in this every day, doing tons of research on this, because this decision was not made lightly. You know, there's certainly some dialogue to be had. I'll leave it at that. Yeah, I, I simply want what's really best for the township. And whatever that, you know, ultimately is and what the council decides is, is, you know, I'm sure going to be made, whatever that decision may be, with what is best for this township in mind. So that said, I want to thank everyone for joining me this evening. I hope to have some more town halls coming up on, on various topics throughout town. We can definitely have some, you know, additional conversations about whatever concerns people have throughout the town. And I look forward to seeing everybody around town on a regular basis. Thank you, everyone, for joining this evening. I appreciate you all joining me here. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.